There he is, Steve.
Hey.
Hey, this is the time set for Steve Campbell, DNRC, local government forest advisor. How are you doing, Steve?
Good.
Good to see you.
Hey, Brian.
Scott, how are you?
How are you?
Linker County.
How's it going? I haven't seen you in a while.
Sue.
Wow.
Yeah.
Quite a while.
Okay.
Yeah.
Me? All right. Good slaughter.
Phil.
I'm here about one side.
I must have seen you.
This is Brian.
Yeah.
And Sean.
Ryan Robbins.
I've been there for twenty-two years now.
Robbins?
Robbins, R-O-V-B-I-N-S, yes.
Sean.
Sean, S-E-A-N, Steinbach, S-T-E-I-N-B-V-A-C-H. That's not how Scott spells it. You gotta bring that on. Where do you want to sit?
Sit anywhere.
Just hold your chair.
That way you'll stop the bullets.
Wait, that's me.
Well, thanks for giving us some time. So I am a pretty new employee with DNRC in Missoula. And I've got the job that Matt Arnold had, I think you worked a little bit with Matt. He got promoted. So he's bureau chief now for Forestry Assistance Bureau. And I came in behind him in April. And so the job that Matt had and I have now is local government forest advisor. The legislature created this position back in two thousand and fifteen to support county, basically counties and other towns, local government. But the focus is fed land management. So I'm here as a resource paid, you know, by the state to help you and other counties in how you work with Forest Service and BLM. And so what I've been doing since I came in April, kind of followed Matt's lead of priorities. But we run a small grant program. So we have chunks of money, like five to ten thousand dollars, to award counties for collaboration or, you know, bring in experts or to travel, just to help you with costs that will engage you with Forest Service and BLM. And so you guys, we awarded Granite County a grant for five thousand back in June because your proposal was to build on the work of the Forest Management Advisory Committee and do more collaboration. So we got that to you recently. And but you don't have that money. We just talked about that. The way we're doing the grants now is it's there for you, but it's reimbursement upon invoices. So if you guys, you guys can spend five thousand dollars with Forest Service or BLM collaboration or if you need to do a study or travel to meetings, just send us invoices and you have up to five thousand dollars. And you've got about a year left. You got until September of two thousand and twenty to use that. And it could be extended. We'd like to try to use it in a year if we can. So you've got that on the table. You know, like I said, we haven't transferred that five thousand, but it's sitting there for it. And so we've got that. So that's, we do that grant program. Also, I'm reviewing almost all the projects that come out of the Forest Service and BLM, their environmental analysis, their schedules, and I kind of watch for bids and things like that. So I'm working with Neil Simpson, another guy in our shop, and we're kind of watching all these projects at Forest Service. And we're starting BLM, mostly been looking at Forest Service. But if you guys have questions or concerns about a project or you wonder like, you know, why are they deconditioning this road or why isn't it bigger or whatever your questions are, feel free to call me. Because I'm really looking at these and DNRC's got goals and we kind of compare them to DNRC goals. And we provide comments on more and more of the projects we're commenting on with DNRC. But we also, I'd also like to help you guys understand if you can, if you want to do comments, a lot of the counties are commenting, sending in comments or objections. You know, they'll have.
So that'd be like on this last timber sales they put, what was it? One was a decent rest of crap.
Yeah.
They got one guy to bid it.
Is that the salvage, the Myers?
Well, I guess I top the charting parts. He's just sort of pretty disgusted. They talk about putting these sales up and they're not even worth doing.
Well.
How come? I mean, does that cost a lot of money?
Yeah.
Everybody wastes the time and their money doing that.
If you see something like that and you want to, you know, like if you're gonna go talk to the Forester about a concern about sale like that, if you want other boys, somebody that represents active management, DNRC's goal is to get things down on the ground. And we're, more and more DNRC is interested in across boundary work. So not just state lands, but fed lands, private lands. So I'm kind of, I'm an advocate for active management across boundaries and trying to get a lot more done in the landscape.
So why should we have to do this with the Forest Service? You know, I, the fire salvage, I went and asked him, I said, why, he's only going like a hundred feet from the road. You know, I mean, there's tons of trees out there.
Right, right.
And you want to give me an answer?
Wait, did you ask like the ranger or who? Yeah, you know, so if you want to meet with them sometime or call them and if you want my opinion, you know, that's what I'm here for. I'm paid, I'm paid resource. I can tell you what I think. I'm looking at these projects. My background is I spent thirty-eight years with the Forest Service, just retired in April, came to Missoula because of dual career, my wife's Forest Service. But I wanted to try something different. I have, I've been district ranger for eleven years and I was forest staff on the pad in Idaho for four years. I was the lead for the state of Idaho's fire plan, the fire mitigation for a few years. So I've done a lot of like fire restoration timber work through the years. And I'm just really interested now in seeing how things are done, different ownerships and how it all kind of works together. That's kind of my, my expertise. I kind of see how the different ownerships and agencies are playing together.
Follow their steps, you'll be fine.
Okay, these guys are doing good.
Well, I was gonna, the only guy I don't know.
He's back for the state.
I believe that the, when Matt was still in that job, Matt did comment on the initial proposal that came out. When they were in their initial planning stages. I know that we did submit comments towards that, you know, in support of doing.
Fire salvage?
Yeah, we, I think Matt's comments, I'm just gonna try from memory, but it was to the effect of this fire burned X number of acres and we urged you to harvest more than what you're harvesting, you know. So I think that was the extent of our comments in the initial stage. And I think then Matt took the bureau chief job and so Steve's in that. So I think Steve's trying to pick up that.
I think a lot of it's stuff. Burnings are going in and they just, instead of really wanting to get the, you know, logs, they're going in to clean it up after they burn. And they burn this stuff and then they want somebody else to come in and, the market's so shitty anyway, if there's nothing there, how do you, how do you waste the money?
I can't even begin to try to estimate what they, how they look at things and how they determine what they're gonna do. I can't, I can't even begin to.
Well, I guess I would start, I know that not in Granite, but in Powell County, then we've got, well, one's, one in Jefferson, one in Powell, we're working a lot with the Good Neighbor Authority, which is, we should talk about that one these days when we have more time. But we've got a bigger one, eleven hundred acres going on in Powell County and which is still Pender's jurisdiction. And so we've been working with the Pembroke Ranger District in addition to folks in Dune to get this put up. It just went out for public comment scoping. Would really encourage you to come out and support that and.
Did it bring good sale? I mean.
You know, it's dead, it's dead, it's, we just finished cruising it. We're looking at probably twenty-five to thirty percent dead lodge pole that's on the ground. The rest of it is standing dead lodge pole and then about forty percent is green, nice green dug for sale.
What are you doing on dead stuff?
We're picking it up and seeing if we can make a log out of it.
But on that note, you know, it's just like you go up on that one oak creek, they got a hundred loads of firewood.
Well, it's real similar to that. So I would say.
What are we gonna do with all this fire? We're getting that.
Yeah.
I mean, they're sound, but they're still, we're gonna have so much, you're gonna have way more firewood in the deck than the rest of it.
True, true. I guess the way I'm looking at it is the way we've got dead trees on, you know, especially on Beaverhead Deer Lodge. I look at it a couple of different ways. Number one is we gotta do something with it because you can't walk through it, you know, fire hazard, everything else aside, something needs to be done. If we can, if we can generate some funds from, you know, green fir and standing lodge pole to pick up some of this stuff. We met with, we met with backcountry horsemen, with sportsman's groups and the, kind of the resounding thing was clean it up, just clean it up.
Is this gonna be in a sale and you guys will take care of it?
Yeah, yeah.
You will manage it? So actually you won't have to like up oak creek where they're having so much trouble trying to get a trailer here, do, would it be just regular log?
Well, still, so we should talk more about it. The way I understand, we only have a half an hour here, but there's a lot of good stuff coming out of it. The way it's supposed to work is as long as we're adhering to what the, what is written in the NEPA and following the forest plan, all of the contractual stuff would be our domain. And so road maintenance and how, how general operations go, that's, you know, you're working with a state central administrator, I myself. And but if, as long as we're, we're not infringing on how the NEPA reads.
Bringing that comment up, we should talk sometime about county roads going into sales. That's another subject. The use of a county road going into sale and they should put it into the contract, the contractor take care of it or raise a county.
If we're giving up fixing a bunch of road, on which, which one? I guess bringing this up.
Well, so I would say.
It's common, I guess like.
You wouldn't have said that ten years ago.
No. I wasn't in here.
But I would say once, once we roll through this, this Powell County one, Cameron and I've talked about what's more closer to, well, in Granite County around Hall and maybe revisiting that Knoxville sale that went to court and didn't survive, that Kelly had, twelve, fifteen years ago. So revisiting those and maybe making some tweaks to the NEPA to see if we can, can make it a little more palable and survive a court. You know, the other benefit of this is the state, the state works on behalf of the feds in, with an amicus brief or what's the other one?
There's intervention.
Uh, intervenor status.
Intervener status, yeah. And we have, we have money parked with the Coalition of Forest Counties to help any county that wants to get involved with lawsuits. So if there's, if there's a project that particularly this is for support, so if there's something you think is a good project and one of the outlying groups tries to stop it, you guys could intervene or do an amicus brief to help keep that going, keep the project going. And we've got some funds for that.
So through MACO?
It's through MACO's Coalition of Forest Counties.
Forests.
Yeah, that choke out. So we've got that and some of the counties are using it right now. Mar and, and Park, several of the counties with the Custer Gallatin are intervening in a couple lawsuits. And the Ten Mile Project near Helena and their watershed is being held up by a couple of groups. So we've got counties engaging with that. And so that's there. That's another thing that we can do as a resource, help you get some legal engagement with these lawsuits. Another thing I was, I wanted to ask you about is this, this Forest Management Advisory Committee that you guys have. I was just gonna mention that you need to speak to them directly. They, they're our advisory group. Right, yeah. This is big enough that, and we meet once a week. Right. So they're really active, Chuck's on it.
Yeah, yeah, my advisor.
Okay, and that's tomorrow. I'm planning to come tomorrow if that's still on. Is it, is it still on? Cause I've got that on my calendar.
Depends on the weather.
Oh, okay. Should I?
Cause our chairman will be there.
I'll, I'll call, I'll call the office here, they will, all right, before I leave because I, where was that, two?
Two.
Two. So I'll plan to come if it's on, if it's still on at noonish, I'll head over from this and go. Wanted to meet that group and it's meeting weekly, you say?
No, no.
Monthly, monthly, okay.
Commissioning is weekly.
What kinds of things are you guys, is that group dealing with right now?
Well, we're doing with coordination, you know about coordination?
Well, I'm not sure, I know what coordination is, but I'm not sure what.
Well, basically a lot of the federal laws, like NEPA and the forest laws and where they have to, the federal government has to coordinate with the commissioners.
Okay.
And so we're, FMAC is coming up with recommendations to us and then we can coordinate with them.
Okay.
And that's not to say that we can change everything we're doing.
So you're talking about.
It's to say that they have to coordinate with us instead of this collaboration.
Yeah.
You know, collaboration, getting everybody agreeing, all this stuff, well, coordination is. We want to do it this way, we want to do it that way, let's coordinate and get it done.
So do you get Forest Service and BLM folks coming in there to, those FMAC meetings and, or you just like looking at their?
They haven't yet, but they plan on getting some speakers and I don't know who that is.
Okay.
Another question that I was gonna have for you, we were thinking about getting a part-time forester, is there any more money grant wise that we can use?
You know, there isn't money that would be directly available for that, but what you can do is you have the authority now with Good Neighbor, with the Good Neighbor Authority to work with the Forest Service and the state. You know, we all can work together and there's potential, there's a way to reimburse you for some of that time. But before we go there, we would have to really work out, you know, what the projects are. It could just be like a one-time thing. You don't want to hire somebody for, you know, one year and then let them go. I mean, I wouldn't think. But if we could stack up several projects that made sense to DNRC and the forest, it's, there's a possibility that that could work, where we could, we could use the returns from the timber to reimburse you with that. So there is an avenue for that, but it's gotta be coordinated. It's gotta be kind of figured out.
Well, I don't think, if you guys had a G and A forester, like twenty eighteen farm bill allows counties to have this good neighbor that we're talking about, you guys have the ability to do that on your own, I believe without DNRC involvement whatsoever. What I would warn you against is everything that supports that, the financials and contracting and all that stuff, you have to have in-house, which gets really complicated and really expensive. And so I know Lincoln County just hired a county forester. But then, right, Lincoln County?
Yeah, but they, they just, the Forest Service Legal just said that they don't want any of the revenue going to the counties. And this is new, this is pretty new this summer. So they completely, we thought, we thought that's what was gonna be able to, and Lincoln County thought they were gonna actually keep some of the receipts from the sales part of the county, but that's been next. So they're, they're saying all the, all the revenue from federal timber, it's gotta go to the state, DNRC. That's, that's a ruling this summer. But then, but they could still work on a G and A sale and turn in an invoice to the state and get paid if, but it has to all be kind of figured out from, if we think that's a good thing. So that's kind of what they're dabbling in Lincoln County is they're, they're talking about reimbursing Lincoln County from the state's.
So the, the law allows the reimbursement, but you're saying that by contract, they're not allowing it per the, per the agreements?
They're even now, the, the Forest Service Legal came in and said, no, we're reading the farm bill is, is only revenue to the state. We're not gonna, and that's a change.
No, I don't read it that way, but I think the law's pretty clear on that. But by agreement, they can do that anyway.
Right.
They can, they control the, they have the power in there.
The, the Forest Service person on that is Maureen Bookwalter, Call her Mobile Walder. And she's kind of, she's come out with this stuff from their legal saying, don't go that route to the county revenue. They're, they're blocking that right now. But it certainly is an avenue that comes to the state and with, by agreement, we would reimburse the county for a forester's work if we had that all figured out in agreement.
Is there an age line in that too then?
Is there a?
About with it? So we hired somebody, we pay half, they pay half, something like that?
We could, we could potentially do that. We, we should, we should sit down, if you guys are interested in hiring a county forester, we'll, we'll need to sit down and kind of look at the schedule, look at, actually look at projects.
Put more time on it.
Put more time and figure out how it works. That's what we did do.
You might want to talk to Senator Danes about that one because, yeah, that needs to change, I think.
Well, yeah.
It's not the system of the law.
Yeah, he, he didn't see it that way at all. But here's the thing, FMAC was our attempt to sort of enforce our will, okay? We're seventy percent forest in this county. Right, yeah. And the, you know, out of staters come in from everywhere and go to the Forest Service and they run our county and we're over that, okay? We're done. We're not gonna do that, okay? We do have the support of both seventy percent counties and we, that's where that bill came from, is guys like us screaming, okay? And we want to work with the Forest Service and especially the state. And, but we want to put our people to work, okay? This was a logging community. We had, you know, all kinds, we don't even have a grocery store in Drummond, okay? This is what has done devastating this community. We're not gonna let that happen again. It's gonna take a while, but we're gonna get back into forest products out of Granite County. And we want to protect our roads. There's a ton of access people that provide income to the county too, you know, that just want to automobile and, you know, get up in the forest, hunt fish. But we want to make sure that they've got access. So it's kind of a two-fold thing. But I would encourage you to work through FMAC, they're, they're our advisory. Yeah, I, I see that. So that, we definitely will do that. I'll, I'll come as soon as I can, tomorrow or when.
You're not on the agenda for tomorrow, I'm sure, that might not work out very well.
Could I just, I just, is it open? I just listen?
Yeah, it's open.
Yeah, it's open.
I, I don't need to.
You can do some public comment, but you might want to get on for November.
Get on November agenda, yeah, okay.
And give it a little spiel.
Would, would you rather have me do that or are you okay if I just come and listen and then come back or?
I don't care if I come and listen.
Okay, but I'm not on the agenda, we, we won't interact tomorrow. Okay.
You could get some like public comments. It should be, he's right on that.
I, I think it would be good for my, it's good for my awareness, just to kind of see the group. Then I can come back, then I can get on the agenda, come back and be better prepared to work with, I think.
So should he call you and Chuck to know if it's gonna be going on or sue or who will know?
Yeah, I'm just gonna kind of look at the weather, see if the chairman doesn't be there. Can you put your number on here, it's like, and give you a call before I leave? Chuck, thanks.
Excuse me, may I have a card? I'm from FMAC and I'll make sure you'll get on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess what I wanted to ask, or just two things I wanted to mention where Candice Loggins is working on a rattler gulch timber sale that started up here in the last week. To your point, understand what you're saying there. In our contract, it states that we will leave that road. If we damage the road, we will repair it to as good or better condition. I don't have a problem with the state.
Yeah, no, I was just, well, I was just thinking that, you know, that, like that rattler gulch road, you know, when it's wet and, and it's not, you shouldn't be on that, our loggers are not on that. But there's people that drive up and down that road every single day and so.
That's a non-maintained road.
Right, it's non-maintained. So what happens on like that is that, that, you know, we're careful and then we end up fixing problems.
No, I understand that. I get, there was something like, I'm talking about Forests like with dirt, they tore it up and we had to go up there with our breaker and put in another caddie or not, you know, and if it's coming down to that, when stuff happens like that, they didn't want nothing even, they weren't helping or nothing. I'm not saying the state, I've never had a problem with the state. And I understand exactly what you're saying about heat traveling, when the maintenance of the road gets completely blew up and then we gotta pay the taxpayers for it like that.
And on that rattler gulch road, so Candice Loggins is gonna be working probably through March, probably I would say about on March first and then it breaks up and we'll shut them down. They have about thirteen, fourteen months worth of work. So my guess is that they're gonna be hauling, or they're gonna be working through March or up to March first, they'll shut down and then start back up June, July when they can and work again through the whole year, the, from June till about March again. There's, there's three point two million foot sale, it's a good sale out there. And I know that Powell County, Granite County splits that section right there, so, you know, but it's all coming out through Granite County. I was gonna ask if you had any, if the county had any maybe signage, additional signage that we could put up there. So we required Candice to put logging, caution log trucks, logging operations signs on there. But that just, people just seem to drive by that without, you know, without even thinking twice.
Why would you want?
Well, I was just thinking if, is it, do you have any recommendations? Is, is a way to try to alert the public and especially through hunting season? Maybe, maybe some speed limit signs, there's no, you know, it's a caution, you know, I don't know.
They're saying in there, it's not watched well enough that the signs that we have put up, they just blow away.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
My recommendation, I just put up with signs Candice won, I guess we're just.
What we, what our contract requires. And, and, yeah, it's, it's, it's gonna be a tough road. That's gonna, that's a tough road to haul out in the wintertime. It is, it's just, it's a tough road, especially that canyon stretch, right?
You know, and they don't have the kids coming out there as an Easter, you know, and they're like past these go out that way. And then some of them other people finally moved out, they figured out it wasn't so fun. There's still people live up there and traveling in and out.
I've got a good.
I don't think they're gonna have the.
I've got a good email group set up and, you know, we're emailing almost daily when, when they're hauling, we're trying to do communication best we can.
The only other thing would be on the highway, which is maybe put a sign up on that corner or with my house where that school bus comes flying up over. So, you know, when they come out there and make that corner now, they can actually go fair amount with all the wicks and wherever that way. Maybe put a sign up on top there and one down, just on the regular highway.
Can you go, is Fairmount, can you get through there now?
Get through the home lane.
Oh, okay. I didn't know, I didn't know.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that that'd be something really, cause that school bus is only concerned there.
And so Candices are excellent operators, as you know. And so, you know, they're, we're working with the homeowners up there and trying to just be as safe as we can and trying to, trying to do as much as we can there. But, yeah, if we, if there is any damage to the road that we feel that we have caused, we are gonna, you know.
It's a big yard to kill, right?
It really is. Totally, I totally agree with you. I want, my motto there is fair is fair and if we do some damage, fair is fair. The other thing I wanted to ask was about the bid for the gravel bit in the middle fork there in that same section. What's, where's that?
So we had, yeah, one bid, we can find the gravel cheaper. We, it's just our state of gravel, other questions right now. And we may go back and take another look at it for other things.
Right now it's.
Yeah.
Who was it?
We won't, no.
Okay, all right.
We sprayed it again.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, sprayed weeds.
When did you spray that?
Last, they have, you have to ask the mom when they send them up. But when you guys said something, Paul called, called the rattler gulch, they did go up and spray it.
Did they? I drove by there several times, I saw all that.
It's terrible.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah. And so it, I would just say that if we, if we do, if there is something in the future, it just needs to be sprayed. And then the other condition was to improve that wire gate and put a powder river gate on there so as to lock that.
I thought that was all you're doing if you was gonna.
Right, right, yeah. Right, right, yeah. That doesn't have to be done, that only has to be done if, 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 if you start crushing or using that. And then really that's it, just so that we don't have people going and start, start shooting range and, you know, making ass.
We'll see what the weed killers, what you can do with it.
Yeah, and I can, and I've got a spray truck, I can, I, I've got, I don't know this too, but if we can, uh.
If they need to spray or something, if they didn't get it through enough, you guys want to, maybe we can get off the spray, do you or whatever?
Yeah, if, yeah, if we can.
Work together.
Give you the chemical.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I just, yeah, that's, I just wanted to know what was the status of that.
But they were supposed to run up, and when we went up and looked at that guy, you know, that was putting that, they, we left there, you and I both then looked, the leaves were terrible.
Get out of there.
Told him to get up there.
Yeah.
So I don't, I haven't been back up, I don't know if you guys did either.
I was by there. I was by there in the last couple of weeks, several times.
And it's, it didn't look like.
It didn't look like, I didn't see much of kale there, so, but, um.
That was a month or better ago that we were up down there supposed to do it, so we better.
I'll, I'll take a look again. Maybe I was, maybe I was seeing stuff that was not in there.
We'll mention it to him again, or I'm just, we need.
I'll take it, I'll take it.
I was gonna say, get them on the version on the, on the, uh, county roads and the VRD, okay? Commissioner Hammer's absolutely right though. I mean, when you let a contract, you got the load equipment separate, okay? Why not produce part of the agreement on their way out, okay? They fixed the road. It's just too simple, because, but what happens, we have the mow to go up there and do it. They're there, you know, it doesn't seem like it's a big deal. I mean, the state's gonna do that, you know? If the, if the feds can learn how to run, their operations are anywhere near what the state does. You could, I'm not, I don't know Forests from Shino, no cop, but I could go into an area where the state's been working and I know it's the state. And I clean it up, I was just in, uh, someone.
He's saying this because we're gonna need some of it.
You can look across the fence and look what's the force here.
So, so it seems like the Forests has some work to do, be a good partner.
They really do.
I, um, I know Sherri Ford well, you met her yet? She's the new forest supervisor for the VRD. Sherri Ford, she just came in, uh, you know, in the spring, but, uh, she worked for me the last, we go way back, so I'm gonna, um.
We got good communications with the ranger, he's in.
Cameron?
He's just always above him.
They're not letting you engage with him?
And we'll work with his, because we want people to, um, to, to get the product out of there. It's good for our county.
Okay, well, it sounds like a challenge, but I'm, I'm up to it. And I'll, I'll, um, work with the F Mac and see how we can move some things over.
Well, and it's, these are guys who are hard to bullshit. He was with the Forest Service, he's a general log, they kind of know what they're talking about.
Excuse me, excuse me, are you gonna public questions or anything?
Well, one more question.
Yeah.
Why would they use fire rehab money on a, to fix up a road, reconstruct a road that had nothing to do with fire?
Yeah, I don't know. Usually, usually it's in the fire area and.
Exactly.
Is it in the fire perimeter?
Depending where you put your camera. I mean, no, it's like ten miles waiting for fire.
Yeah, I mean, that's a question for Cameron or one of the line officers.
No, no, they'll answer it.
You expect us to? You expect us to?
Well, who's working for?
Well, we, you know, with rehab money comes for rehab and post-fire, um.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I don't, I don't know what's going on.
It's, it's hard to say with, you know, with these fires, you know, the, the, the gross area is so big and the contingency lines that they put in, you know that. That, if they, if they've been driving back and forth on that road.
No, you know where it is, going down the East Fork Camp Road?
Yeah.
That road, you ever heard about that?
Okay, I have.
It's called Viking Lane.
Yeah, I have.
And they reconstructed that road.
Okay.
Basically goes.
Using fire, using.
And the subdivision.
Using fire money?
Huh?
Using the fire rehab.
So the fire guys doing up there, they're using the upper road.
You're right.
So as an example, I don't know what happened there, but what I, what I would think about doing is having the commissioner send a letter so they have to respond to you in writing. And ask them an explanation. You deserve, you deserve a written explanation, you can do that.
So it avoids the break, is that, I know when that was going, they, they didn't want to take a low boy over that spillway bridge there. Is that where you're talking?
East Fork? No, it's before that. He's talking about, you know, when they come in here and talk about that bridge, next year they're gonna redo all that.
Yeah. Oh, so that's not where they.
Well, they'll use fire money to do that.
Yeah.
They will.
You already made it?
That's what I heard. Well, thanks for coming to introduce yourself.
Did you have any?
Did you?
My name is Alena Gagley, and I'm an F Mac member.
Okay.
And just for the record, can I have your names again?
I'm Steve Kimball.
Okay, Steve.
Brian Robbins.
Thank you.
Sean Steinbach.
Okay. Steve, uh, we meet tomorrow at two o'clock and it'll be downstairs and you're welcome to be there.
Okay, that sounds good, downstairs here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. I'll see you there, but I'll call, maybe before I take the trip, uh, to make sure it's on.
Oh, it will be on.
It'll be on, okay. All right.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah.
I think, yeah.
I think we got a good, a good, a good.
Congratulations.
I've become a junior, he's your assistant.
Chuck.
I think we settled on his. Boss, brother's assistant.
For who? Okay, I know you have many with White Crawford, but.
Okay.
Good to meet you.
Forests, yeah, always here, we always, we always on.
No, no, Washington.
Where are you, Washington?
Public permission.
I work at the same, I work at the same, I'll say.
Huh? Where are you, Washington?
Um, who knew?
Yeah.
Looks to be at home, tricks.
I was at Horn, there.
Oh, okay. Started a second. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.